This Livingston City Commission meeting on January 3rd is called to order, roll call please.
Chair News.
Here.
Vice Chair Kale.
Present.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Rosa.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
Excellent. So first thing on the agenda is election of commission chair and vice chair. I believe we did chair first last time. I believe we did chair first last time.
Yeah. Oh, no, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, to assign or elect Melissa Newt as chair. You did a great job, Mr. Melissa. I really appreciate all the work that you did. For us as a commission, this was a hard year and you really stepped up. And if you would have it, I would love to see you stay on this chair.
Thanks, Carrie.
I'll second.
To a motion by Kale and a second by Lyons. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate your vote confidence. And next on the list is election of vice chair. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make motion to approve nominee. Carrie Kale.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I'll, I'll second that. Carrie, I think you did a great job in what's instead while she was having vision problems this, this summer and you ran some great meetings as well. And thank you both have worked well as a team and we've appreciated all the extra effort throughout this difficulty here. So I'd be happy to vote for you as a vice chair again.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I appreciate that.
Carrie, I think you're great. And I think, you know, behind every functional chair, there's a solid vice chair. So thank you. All right. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate that.
All right.
So, next up on the agenda is commissioner seating assignments. Actually, these seating assignments matter this year unlike all last year we sat at home. We look pretty comfortable. Is everybody good with staying in this?
Yep.
Okay.
If Quentin will have me. Well, it's the way you want. We have more room here.
That's between.
I've been sitting over there. I've sat over there for four years and all that's good.
All right. So if we're good, we'll just.
As long as I don't get over there backwards.
But then you have the chief behind you. See, that's. Somebody literally always has your back. Okay. So we're good with this seating arrangement and we'll just stick with it.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Next up is public comment. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory powers. So if you have comment that's not on an agenda item, you're welcome to give it now, our overflowing room of public. We can start in the room, Lyndy, if you have anything you want to share. Otherwise, we'll go to the screen.
I feel like the Lone Ranger. You know.
Well, we're glad that you're here. So thanks for.
Thank you.
So, oh, may I ask a question? How did you find out that we were meeting here?
I ran into Melissa at True North Conference.
Okay. So was it social media or newspaper or?
No.
Okay.
Here's social.
Well, yeah, I know. Yeah. Person to person. Okay. I'm just curious because.
I saw her and so.
Yeah, I knew about it, you know, and, you know, just.
I did see it in the newspaper. I will tell you.
Yeah, I did too. And making sure.
Good question.
I'm glad just going to use them now on, right? You don't have to assume to check in.
Or you go. Or, you know, the city conference room is so small. This is, we're so much better.
So I think there's some folks online. So well, it looks like Patricia Graybo.
Oh, yeah.
Patricia, if you want to come off mute, you're welcome to give public comment. We can't hear you, Patricia. Can you hear us?
Looks like she's on mute.
Patricia, are you there? Can you hear us? See you. Now we see you.
Do you see me?
Okay, now we can hear you.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for letting me speak. Patricia Graybo, 204 East Calendar Street. I, I just want to address one thing that I encountered yesterday that I really am concerned about. I, I came across a brochure that is doing fundraising for apparently a wellness center that would take down our civic center. The brochure says it will take down our civic center. It's eliciting money from citizens or commitment of money based upon the taking down of our civic center. I do not remember this city commission never voting to take down our civic center, number one. Also, in the brochure, in my conversation with the fundraiser, it was apparent that if we don't do what apparently Arthur, Arthur Blank wants us to do in terms of the damage to our civic center, then possibly we won't have the funding for this wellness center, all of which raises legal questions. And I think either, I think that the city commission, the city attorney needs to look into the legal implications of this brochure and this fundraising effort. I know that I, since I attend most of the meetings, I know that there was a group that was formed to go out and seek funding, but at no point in which that direction was given was it ever said that we would take down our civic center, but even the graphics on this fundraising shows this, just our civic center facade there and this incredibly horrific wellness center, unquote, to be built on a landfill 25 feet from the Yellowstone River, completely in defiance of our growth policy. And I, I'm just a grit. So I'm asking the city commission, and by the way, some people may not like art deco, but even just two weeks ago, when it got so cold, it was discussed about people being able to seek refuge in our civic center. I know when we had the fires in the valley that the fire headquarters was created in our civic center. Our civic center has all kinds of uses that have absolutely nothing to do with recreation. It is a, and, and generations of Livingston people, the Swindlerhurst donated the land. The Warren McGee spent 17 years creating Sacagawea Park. All these things are irrelevant, apparently, to this brochure that is, is being circulated and apparently they've come up with more than $16 million, but only if we put it there and tear down our civic center and put it in that location, according to the brochure. So I am, I am asking, it just sounds totally illegal to me. And so I'm asking the city attorney to look into this. That, there is no individual who has more than one vote. And you are, are wonderful, frankly, legislative body. And I am, I, I'm, I'm just beyond myself in terms of my, my sadness with having encountered this brochure and this fundraising effort, the way it has been created. One other thing.
Patricia, you're out of time.
Okay.
Patricia, we can't, the commission can't discuss. Where's the camera anyway for this? It's right there in the owl. No, it's pretty fancy. Thank you.
I know you can't discuss it. I'm just saying, this is.
I know. I just, I just want to respond to you, Patricia. So the five of us can't discuss that because they haven't been on the agenda. But I just want to confirm that we have not voted on the wellness center and the commission never voted for any sort of group to go out and fundraise. So could you please provide that brochure? If you bring it to city hall, they can put it in my mailbox and we can have copies made for all the commissioners and I can also share with our city manager.
Okay. Especially since $16 million apparently has been raised based upon this brochure.
We can't discuss it anymore, but if, could you just bring what you have and then we'll be able to, each of us five will independently be able to see what you're talking about. We can share it with the city manager and he can do some internal work to figure out what's getting stuff to speed. So thanks, Patricia. Is there anybody else that wants to give general public comment? If you want to, Lyndy, just, we try to get in the habit of signing in and coming to the podium.
You do it after.
Yeah. Yeah, either way, it's fine.
So speak into Mike, but.
This is Mike. It's not right there at like the end of the table closest to you, but you stand there. Yeah, yeah, just.
This is new for all of us.
Anyway, just to correct Patricia's comment, the civic center is on the cloud island, not miles, yeah, not Sacagawea Park. Swindlerhurst donated Sacagawea Park. It's a different island, just for Patricia's information. And that's all, just a tiny correction.
Thank you.
May I correct that? That's incorrect.
We appreciate all of our local historians. So thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to give general public comment? I don't see anything. Anything? Okay. So general public comments closed and we'll move into consent items. Does anyone have anything that they want from the four consent items? I have some corrections to the minutes. I'll just do those now. So on page nine of our packets, at the end of the variance vote, it says motion passes three to one Kale against. I just want to correct it for the record that Kale was for it and News was against it.
No, yes.
And then on page 11, just above city manager comments, it says a motion to conditionally approve preliminary plat of the Northtown subdivision with the conditions outlined by the chair, seconded by Lyons. The motion was made by Kale. So just want to note that for the record. And then other missing motion and vote was for adjournment. The motion to adjourn was by Lyons. The second was by Kale and it passed four to zero. And that is what I have for amendments to the minutes. Is there anything else folks want to pull or discuss before we do a motion on the consent items? Right. So we have a motion on the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A through D.
Second.
Motion by Kills and the second by Friedman. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Vice Chair Kale.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. I also just want to make a note, probably like the other commissioners, that we have amazing applicants and we have amazing applicants that are not.
That was the only reason I was going to pull it, just to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss anything?
No, 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 no. But I just want to keep things moving. But thank you. Thank you for applying and awesome.
It was not like this when I started on the commission where every board was filled with extra. Is there a way we can like hang on to applications for a while or when we're doing these like work sessions?
Months.
Okay. Yeah. And like any work sessions or ad hoc committees or whatever that might come up, we can like put people on a list to just nudge them that there's more opportunities. These are amazing people. Yeah. Okay.
That's absolutely something that we will do. And I have spoken with a number of these applicants, especially with regards to the conservation board, about other opportunities that I don't want to get too far in front of myself, but the city does have some initiatives rolling out in the next several months that, that we think that many of these applicants will be very useful for.
That's great. Great.
Yeah, it was very exciting to see those applicants. So thank you for, thank you to all those folks for, for stepping up and hopefully we can keep pining you for other opportunities.
Yeah. Right. Moving on then. We have two proclamations. The first one is a nod to my home state. Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs moderate the temperature, clean air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Melissa Newt, Chair of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Livingston, Montana, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the wellbeing of this in future generations. To gladden your heart. Is there anything that you wanted to add to this? I know it seems like every year our tree board does something for Arbor Day.
They, they do. And ordinarily, one might expect a proclamation to occur closer to the date. We are doing this here today to support some efforts of our tree board and specifically some grant outreach that has in the past paid for the removal of certain hazard trees and planting of other trees. And so that is why we're here today. And I look forward to celebrating the day in four and a half months.
I think last year they might have done a school, planting a tree plant at one of the schools too. So.
My wife's been involved in that over the years.
Yeah.
With, you know, Governor Bullock and stuff, you know, planting.
And farmers school like help.
Yeah, farm to school.
Keep them alive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah. Well, that's great. Is there anything anybody else wants to say, commissioners, before we move on to the next proclamation? And yes, you have to learn about this in school when you're, when you grow up in Nebraska. That question was burning on your mind. The next proclamation is of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, recognizing national human trafficking prevention in Livingston. Whereas the Montana Department of Justice assisted and identified 68 cases of human trafficking in 2021, an increase of 871% from 2015. And whereas, according to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, human trafficking involves use of force, broader coercion to obtain some type of labor or commercial sex act. A commercial sex act is the giving or receiving of anything of value, money, drugs, shelter, food, clothes, rent, payment, et cetera, to a person in exchange for a sex act. And whereas, as of 2021, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children received more than 17,000 reports of possible child sex trafficking and estimates, estimates one out of six endangered runaways are likely child sex trafficking victims. And whereas in 2022, the U.S. Department of Labor identified 158 goods from 77 countries made by forced and child labor. And whereas we as a community strive to provide resources to empower self-sufficiency, restore dignity, and support recovery from trauma for survivors. And whereas the City of Livingston encourages residents to educate themselves, learn the warning signs, know the potential indicators of trafficking, and report suspected predators by calling or texting 1-833-406-STOP, or reach out and advocate via live chat at 406stop.com and be a part of the solution. Now therefore, be it resolved, that on behalf of the City Commission, I, Melissa Newt's Chair, do hereby proclaim 2023 to be Human Trafficking Prevention Month, who support the advocacy efforts of the Montana Department of Justice and the Human Trafficking Task Force in Livingston, and encourage our residents to know the signs, be part of the solution, and report any suspected human trafficking to law enforcement. Mr. Gager, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, other than to say I, I think it is important work that all our law enforcement members within the city and across the state do. And so I thank the House for their work.
Agreed. Commissioners. Keep on moving. Anybody want to say anything? Next up, we have a resolution. Just the one resolution tonight. Resolution number 5078, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Herrera Environmental Consultants for Solid Waste Services Analysis. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. I appreciate the opportunity. The, the resolution before you folks is to enable the signing of a contract with Herrera that would evaluate our solid waste disposal. And, and currently, as we have for a number of years, the city trucks our waste up to the Great Falls area. And, and so this study is to evaluate other landfill opportunities. And it also, in the scope of work that is included in the packets on pages 96 through 98, it also includes an analysis of who would handle the hauling to the different sites, whether we would, the city would self haul or the city would engage in a contractor to haul. So we are aware that there have been some solid waste hauling and disposal changes within Park County. And, and, and so the, the City of Livingston and Shannon and his team have found it appropriate to similarly review our solid waste handling efforts. And, and so this study is to help inform their work. So I will stand for any questions you may have. And those that I cannot answer myself, I will pass on to our public works director, Shannon Holmes.
Commissioners, do any of you have clarifying questions?
Just real quick one. I thought I saw it, but when was last studied on our solid ways?
We have been in the current arrangement since 2009.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Well, here it is. 2017, we've been with these, with. MWS, okay. And then, yeah. And then the county left itself. Yeah. So it makes a huge difference. Okay. I'm telling you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just curious, we, we feel like we need to outsource this. This isn't something that we can, we can do internally.
I, it, it, it sounds like the public work staff does not have the, the capacity in-house to do it. And there are a, a few elements when it comes to reviewing the actual, the hauling and who would haul, whether it would be the City of Livingston or whether we would outsource that, that, that staff has, that would be better performed by than.
If I might add, was valuable the last time we did this study like that or invaluable, really made a difference. It really takes the weight off our shoulders, you know, public works, you know. We're overextended as it is in. And this is a, a new, new person I'm not familiar with. Trying to remember the last contractor, Shannon knows, but that's irrelevant at this point, but I think it's money well spent. Here you go.
I have a clarifying question, since it sounds like it wasn't done that long ago, or a while ago. Have we ever looked at contracting to have solid waste picked up? It seems like a lot of municipalities in Montana do that. And I wonder if it's been considered in Livingston since. It's just another option. We can think, thinking about funding and staffing.
I, I certainly am familiar with that model where there is a franchise that's awarded to an independent party who handles all of it. I'll defer to Shannon. Shannon, are, are you aware of the, the city in, in your tenure here has examined the outsourcing of solid waste collection, the, the curbside work?
So, thank you, Grant. Appreciate it. Happy New Year, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So, you know, fortunately, in, in my tenure, we, we've had a, a compact chapter and have had a good collaboration with Park County in a partnership. And due to that contract or compact chapter being absolved this past July, it, it, I think increases the opportunity to look at all options available. And certainly that is something that I've had discussions with Republic Services specifically due to our relationship, and it's something they're certainly interested in. So that, that is an option with this study moving forward.
So.
I, 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 I do have concerns. Our, you know, our community has made a significant investment in a transfer station and a recycling facility. And we certainly have the infrastructure and staff to do that in-house. And I, and I have concerns that while it might be a, a pretty good deal for maybe a year or two or three, but I, I do see substantial increases to our residents and businesses under that model.
So it's unclear to me, Mr. Gager, is that going to be considered in this or not?
The, the curbside work is not currently included within the scope of work of this study. However, if it's the will of the commission, staff can certainly have that discussion with the, the consultants and, and develop the scope of work and the way the cost estimate for that, if the commission would like.
I suppose that was a clarifying question at that discussion after.
Yeah.
I would be interested in what other commissioners. Okay. Any other clarifying questions about this? Now you go. Okay, thanks. Okay. So do we have a motion and resolution number 5078?
Make motion to approve. Resolution 5078.
Do we have a second? So a motion by Schwartz and second by Friedman. And now we will open up to public comment. Does anybody here that wants to give a comment on resolution 5078 will start in the room. If anybody wants to go first. And then we'll move to the screen. Anybody online?
Does not.
All right. So public comment for resolution 5078 is closed. And now we can move to commissioner deliberations. Who would like to go first? Quentin. I mean, Commissioner Schwartz.
One is fine.
I don't know. Solid waste is one of my. I don't know why I like it so much, but I do. Being a contractor and dealing with transfer station and all the people involved and and meeting at least once a month with the guy that drives down the alley, picks up my trash and talk to him. I like the system that we have. I know Bozeman's been put in a position where they've had to have Republic come in because of the unfair bidding process or whatever. I'm not sure about that. I'm not going to get into that, but I like the fact that as a city, we employ people and we give them benefits and and a competitive wage and and it's about community. It's about, you know, our people here, you know, and providing jobs and, and stuff like that and keeping the business here. And I, I think up to this point, we've done a excellent job, especially with our recycling. There's, I, I swear and challenge anybody in the state to compare us with our recycling. We do more recycling than Missoula, which is a very, very liberal city and county. They don't even take plastic anymore. And they're making it hard to take cardboard or anything like that. So and I, I, I don't mind paying and stuff like that. So you know, with the county pulling out, yeah, our tonnage goes way down. We need to look for options. One thing that still drives me nuts is I've been working on a job up in White Soulford and seeing the trucks have to drive a number of miles to dispose of our, our waste. And there's got to be a better way. And I, I know Logan is what, 40 miles from here, round trip, 45, 80 miles round trip. But that being said, the thing is we're we have to be responsible to our community on what we pay. And it's been cheaper to send it to Great Falls than it would be to Logan. So I think we need this study. I think it's well worth the money spent. And that, I will use.
Thank you. Who is next? Well, I'll say what I was thinking with considering contract. Well, I'll say, uh, what I was thinking with the considering contract work is, you know, for just over four years that I've been on the commission, I've been. There's one department that's typically understaffed and it's public works. And that we're pretty regularly hearing about budget constraints to these departments, and so I was just thinking about. Where do we never have enough people and where? Where do we apparently never have enough money, and so I was thinking maybe it made sense to look at. The department more or the solid waste part of the department more holistically and see if there's anything else that could be done to. You know, improve capacity and improve the budget if that's been a constant issue over the years. That's kind of where I was thinking or what I was thinking when I, that thought came to mind. But I'm open to hearing what other commissioners think of adding something like that to the contract.
I've been as part of this community for many years and. I've never heard any. Problems, you know, it seems it gets done. Can it be done differently? I think we could inspect that and put that up against what we're doing. I just said, it's never, you know, I think we have convenient stuff, we have one location, if we got the cardboard and papers and boxes and all that stuff. And it seems to work. Now, if there's a better, I I think it's worth it. Poking or nosing somewhere and say, okay, let's, let's look at some other options. And we might find out that we've got a pretty good deal.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Lyons or Kiel.
I could sort of go either way with the addition of looking at, you know, that part of. Part of the collection practice to see if there is a different way or a more economical way we can do it. I do appreciate Shannon's comments about our, you know, our investment so far and that type of infrastructure that we already have in place and with that. Sort of, if we stopped picking up trash and doing those other things without sort of eliminate the need for the infrastructure that we've already put in place. So I I appreciate the bad comment because. I hadn't quite thought of, thought about all of those things. I mean, I think that we obviously, you know, hearing from Mr. Gager from the department that, you know. We needed outside folks to to do this analysis. Do we need to add that addition to this now, so I don't know? I guess I would just say I don't have strong feelings either way. I know that's not helpful.
Well, we're split right now, so Commissioner Lyons, do you have thoughts on it?
Not particularly, I I would, I would lean on the Director of Public Works of his. Thinking on whether we need to tack on to the study because I, you know, this is what what they thought we should be voting on. And I I I appreciate the the ideas, but I'm kind of curious what. Shannon would think about that, but we are past the. Clarifying questions part, so that's why I have not added anything, so I'm. I share. To, to be more brief, I share Vice Chair Kiel, I'm bit one song.
Commissioner Shorts, did you want to go again?
Um, yeah, I, I guess I. Kind of assume that it would be. What this, um, the outside contractor would look at. Somebody like Republic coming in and stuff like that, am I mistaken or is it just limited to? Our efficiency or landfill operations?
Yeah, can you answer Commissioner Schwartz's and then we'll give Commissioner Lyons to a chance to get his, if that's okay?
Absolutely, the 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 scope of work as it's currently structured does not involve any of the the curbside pickup work. It is is strictly going for where does the solid waste end up and who gets it there, the city or contractor?
Thank you, that's all I need to know, yeah. Sorry, I didn't pick up on that sooner, but, right, thank you.
No, I think there was something that was said that indicated it could.
Yeah, and. But still, I'm just to. I like the fact that we employ people and keep it that way and I'm willing to pay a little bit more for that, but that's me personally, not as a commissioner, thank you, are you?
Did you want to ask your follow-up question, Commissioner Lyons? Your call.
I mean, I I guess. To bring it back to deliberation. I I know I have a tendency to do this, but I'm gonna like identify what we're, what I think we're talking about. So what I think we're talking about is in front of us here is a study to examine basically the. Potential scenarios of how to bring our solid waste to. A a variety of locations and how we might do that. What's been brought up in the discussion is the potential to examine the collection of solid waste as well. I think I missed in the discussion the impetus for that. So I think I'm feeling maybe like a little bit lost where that came from, I think that's on me. But, you know, that's that, that's not what I see being proposed here. That doesn't, I don't think that invalidates that question, but I I missed the, I missed the impetus of that question.
From my perspective, it's just, if we're examining the cost. Of solid waste and moving it around from place to place. We potentially could expand the contract to include. Taking it from the source and bringing it. To, you know, because we're just talking about like from point A to point B, but we're not talking about this other. Section of the system that also costs money and staff time, and so I was saying. We could just expand it because this is what a lot of other cities do.
So, so I guess. Then that makes me more clear on my, what my question would be to staff and that question would be. Uh, Mr. Gager, uh, my question would be, how does? Staff feel about the current efficacy of our ability to pick up? Waste curbside, are there issues there? If, if there are issues there, let's think about studying it, if you don't feel like there's issues there, let's go with the contract with the scope in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner, I I will say today is the start of month number three for me on the job. And having the opportunity to visit every department and meet all staff. I I can say that solid waste is not one that I have identified as an area that we could potentially improve our operations in. Uh, it is one of the areas of city operations that I receive. Um, and and we as a leadership team received probably the most positive public feedback on of all city services and so. Uh, in my initial review of of our solid waste operations, again, it it's not one that is has stood out to me as as. Um, a top priority for analyzing, but again, this is approximately day sixty-two or sixty-three for me here, so. Uh, Shannon, I would, I would open that to you a- as well. You you heard Commissioner Lyons's question, I assume? Um, and would you care to add anything regarding the efficacy of our solid waste collection services?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gager, and I do, I appreciate this discussion. I'm really, I admire the thoroughness of this commission and and really looking into a lot of the details. I'm very proud of our collection. Staff, uh, we have adequate equipment, commission has, you know, approved significant purchases. To enhance that collection through the annual budget process, you know, we have a brand new garbage truck on order. Uh, we provide a green can collection through the summer as well that I think it is. Is a, is a, at a more than reasonable rate. I'm 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 happy with our level of service in in the collection realm of our solid waste division. Um, Bob and Dusty do a great job, um, we are very responsive, I think the level of service that we have. With our business, community and and residents would be second to none. That being said, um, I have the a relationship, um, I I am the person in charge. Of negotiating that contract with Republic and have since two thousand seventeen. Um, I do, I do wanna. Uh, just kind of throw, there there is a typo in in my staff report and I apologize. Livingston, City of Livingston has had a relationship with Montana Waste Systems and Republic Services since two thousand and seven, so. We're, we're actually on our fifteenth year. With that relationship. Um, unfortunately, there's been a sixty percent increase over that time, but that being said, if if it truly is the commission's desire. Uh, and I'm directed by the city manager, I I'm very comfortable having a discussion with Republic Services. On what, uh, their proposal would be to take over the collection and hauling and disposal. Uh, that is something that does not need a consultant assistance to do, that's something that I can request from. From Republic specifically, um, that being said, I I, this is a hauling and disposal contract. Um, that I'm requesting consultation from Herrera on, I, and. I appreciate this discussion, so I I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, it does, uh, thank Director Holmes and, uh, Mr. Gager, I. The way my response to that answer is that at this time, it wouldn't be particularly prudent to add to the scope of. Uh, of what we're seeing here, and so I really appreciate the 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 response from from staff and. Um, it makes me comfortable sticking with the scope that's presented before.
Other commissioners? Otherwise, we've all had a chance, I think.
I never heard any problems with what we do.
That's great.
Uh, I'm, I guess I'm with Shannon, you know, if it's if it's working. It never established of working at other options, and I think that's where we are. Meanwhile, the stuff gets picked up every day, you never hear about it, and I've been doing it for years that I've discovered. We've got a lot of problems, I've never heard about trash problems. People don't like the sweet sleeper because that's a whole other thing.
So.
But this seems to have worked and I I think there's no, absolutely not to stop us from, if there's something better, I'll let's look at it.
So, can we say something?
I, you know, I, in response to the 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 commission's conversation here, I I'd be happy to commit to. Working with Director Holmes to evaluate solid waste operations as part of our upcoming budget process. And perhaps we can continue this conversation on the 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 collection side of the business during the budget process.
I imagine that would be appropriate, I would imagine those, uh, the hourly hourly rate is cheaper than two hundred and fifty dollars an hour of the consultants. Probably seems prudent to me.
Or at least we're already paying for it. I, I think this all sounds great, I want to. Be really mindful and intentional when we talk about. If and how past invest investments affect future decisions, because I think that can be a very slippery slope when you start crunching numbers and. Thinking about, um. Indirect implications of decisions, that if we're only using past investments as a marker of whether or not to make future decisions, it's not always the best. You know, the best way to. Not to say that we shouldn't keep doing what we're doing, if that's the best, that's the best, let's keep doing it, alright, so we have a motion by Schwartz to approve resolution five zero seven eight. And a second by Friedman, anything else? Roll call please.
Chair News.
For Vice Chair Kiel.
For Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have two action items. The first is discuss approved and I second Julia Miles Park National Historic District nomination, Mr. Gager.
Good evening, Chair News and members of the commission, so the item before us was. Triggered, there was a local Livingston resident who has created a. Uh, application for nomination for the, um, second Julia Park Miles Park National Historic District and. So the, uh, the submission of the application to the state has triggered a comment period of sixty days. And we are in the the comment period, the, um, the state will formally hear the application, I believe on January nineteenth. And so, um, the 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 question before the commission tonight is whether they would like to support the application. And if so, uh, my my staff and I will communicate that to the state and they will move their process forward. Um, and just to be clear, their process, uh, involves consideration of the application and then whether to forward that. On, um, to the the actual federal, um, process in in Washington that would ultimately. Uh, end up in the the district, um, being registered on the, um, on the national register. And and so, um, again, this is the the commission's opportunity to opine on on whether they would like to support the nomination. And I I will also say that. Internally, since being made aware of the application, staff has conducted a number of reviews, both financial and operational. And, uh, on the the financial side primarily, the the team evaluated. Um, whether the creation of this district would possibly inhibit the use of of certain funding sources that. That are likely or expected to be used in that area, um, given both the the recreation assets that exist within the park. But then also the, um, the levy that exists just outside but adjacent to the park, and and so we've evaluated. Uh, again, the the financial implications of the creation of such a district and at a staff level, we can find no adverse implications. Uh, it it doesn't appear to jeopardize any of our, again, um, likely future funding sources. And and from an operational standpoint, um, the establishment of the district, uh, does not appear to inhibit. The city's ability to care for our assets and maintaining our assets, uh, i- in a way that we seek that, and so. Um, from a staff standpoint, we do not see a- at this point, any, um, adverse implications of your support of such an application for the creation of the district. And and so we believe the team folks whether or not would like to to support the application.
Thank you. Do any of you have clarifying questions, Commissioner Lyons?
Um, I I appreciate the way that you put that of of caring for and maintaining existing assets. I'm curious if staff has considered how it might affect, um, adding to or changing assets within that that district.
Very good question. Yeah, that that is a a key question and and a part that I skipped over. Um, so Jennifer Severson, our our planning director, who is who's available virtually. Uh, a- and I have had a number of conversations, um, a- at the state level and and the short answer is no. Uh, we have found a number of districts even within the state of Montana that's, um, have repurposed. Existing infrastructure or buildings, uh, expanded buildings, um, that that were inside the district and and so, no, it did. It very much appears that that we could construct new, um, infrastructure or buildings, modify existing. Really with the, if this district is created, it provides an opportunity for the state to review projects. And provide feedback on how we carry out the projects, um, but there is no, you know. A veto authority that's been created, we we still have the ability to do what we would like with our.
So. Could you, um. Provide the commission with an, if it, an elevator description of what? The district would stand to to gain from the designation.
Um, a- a- as indicated in the in in the staff report, there are already several districts within the the city and. And and so, um, having a a another listed on the national register, um, provides, uh, a little bit of marketing. Um, and kind of a a little for us to raise some awareness of the city of Livingston and. Um, and 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 so it's, uh, it's as much recognizing our cultural, cultural and historic assets. As it is our ability to kind of broadcast that out, realizing that we have kind of this imprimatur of of it being on the the national register, so it's. Um, that that really is probably the true value.
Do you, um, do you perceive having it registered if that were to have to happen as a result or, you know, down the line? Do you foresee that slowing down processes of developing new infrastructure or. Improving or maintaining buildings and so forth?
I I I don't see it improving our ability in any meaningful way.
So I'm, I I live in the neighborhood, I'm a big fan of the McNair. So I'm, I I live in the neighborhood. Uh, I'm a big fan of the McNair Gravity Park. Um, I'm there on a on a regular basis in the summertime. Um, and uh. Among my cohort, there's always been rumors of it potentially expanding someday, and that's that's part of my interest in in these questions. But uh, I think uh. Of interest beyond this skate park um and mentioned in this in the staff report. Are um the the W P A projects in in there, which are just spectacular, a really cool part of our history. And so generally, and particularly if it doesn't impede our ability to continue to make improvements to the park. Um, in the future, I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
I yield. Thank you. Other clarifying questions?
I have one. Um. I I assume some clarifying question with um regards to the uh Civic Center. Does that limit what we can do with the Civic Center? Or is? It ties in with the Wellness Center, uh replacing the Civic Center with the Wellness Center. And uh. Does that limit our ability to develop that area?
I, from uh our our conversations at at the state level, it it does not appear to limit our ability. In fact, the 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 state officers were um able to point us in the direction of several other historic W P A. Um, era buildings that have been converted into uh new uses, um expanded, renovated, improved upon. Transitioned into new uses um while being within a district. And so um now we've got, we've done empirical examples of of other Montana communities that have uh completed projects that are being caught similar to. Are being contemplated at that.
Okay, yeah, cuz they talked about the degradation of the workmanship of that building over the years, you know, and not quite what it was when it was. Yeah, I just, you know. You know, being able to utilize that that whole area down there, I just wanna be sure it doesn't limit us. Um, I am. Somewhat familiar with the historic preservation process. Having dealt with um. The stuff in um. Generally doesn't deal with the interior, but the exterior is mainly the thing they wanna maintain um integrity of that. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Other commissioners?
I think my main question, and I think it's unanswered, but I think it's important to ask anyway. Truly, if we need to do something different with the levy, if there needs to be work done on the levy, if we need to find funding for the levy, this will not impede that in any way.
I I was the staff member that personally went and and reviewed uh the public assistance, the FEMA Public Assistance Program. And the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, and I could find nothing in there that um that this would interfere with. And those are, those really are the two most likely funding sources um for that type of work. And I I was unable to find anything. My experience uh dealing with those programs in other places leads me to believe that uh there will be no issues. And and so, no, we would not be bringing this uh forward with with this type of recommendation, which is valid and jeopardize everything.
Just wanted to sort of get that a little more on the record, so thank you.
Anything else? That was excellent. Lots of good direct questions. All my questions have been answered. So, do one of you folks wanna make, oh, oh, put on the brakes, Commissioner Lyons?
I will. I will um make a motion to. I wanna make a motion, but with with a change. But actually, let's just. Let's just discuss the change before I do that. So my favorite mountains in the world are the Absorca Range, which are the mountains to the south of Livingston. Um, but on page one hundred and ten, it describes the mountains around us. And it says, what we Livingston sits in a wide, wide valley surrounded by the Bridger Range from the west, Galatin Range to the south, and Crazy Mountain from the east. Um, I think. I think that that should either be changed to the Absorca Range, or say Absorca and Galatin Range to the south. Uh Canyon Mountain is technically the Galatin Range, so not wrong that the Galatin Ranger to the south, but um.
It's the Galatin National Forest. That's always on the range.
Well, technically, technically Canyon Mountain or Wineglass Mountain is part of the Galatin Range. Uh, it's 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 a sub-peak of the Galatin Range. So you could say that the Galatin Ranger Southwest could be Absorkas.
If I may, if I may, just as a process question. I don't know that you would have to make a motion in a, make an amendment to the motion. Could you just make an amendment to the text and then the motion? Or how would you, how would you request we proceed?
No, a- a- absolutely fantastic question, and and thank you for your attention to detail, Commissioner Lyons. I I I I guess I will say, at a staff level, we have noticed a few um inconsistencies wi- within the 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 application. And so we have a a a number of um changes or um, you know, corrections that we are going to point out to the state in our response letter. Um, we are happy to add this to the list. I believe we have this one on the list, but I'll verify. And um, and so, no, we don't need change to the motion. Uh, but if there's anything else that any other commissioner may have noticed. Uh, feel free to note that here or in an email to me, and we'll be sure that that's included in our correspondence to the state. So there are, there are several, just kind of deep and kind of factual historical items that we've noticed that are incongruent.
I'm mostly just curious if we can have access to the corrections, because we all probably find this information interesting. If there's a way that you can email us, the. Uh, Commissioner Lyons, you still have the floor.
Um, so I I'll make a motion.
It's on page one oh one.
I move, I move to support the Montana State Historic Preservation Office's nomination to establish. The Sacagawea Miles Park National Historic District and the addition of the new district to the National Register of Historic Places. And request the city manager send a letter indicating such support with changes to the letter.
I'll second. Alright, so we have a motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. The motion, as it's written, with the addition of with. Changes to the letter. I'm just making time to see that. So I gotta get it right.
Yeah, a lot of the stuff.
And then what we're gonna do is open up, what, open up to the public for a comment next, before we chitty chat again. Lyndy, you're welcome to come up.
Do I sign the second time?
Just to say your name now.
I could have a question. Is the municipal swimming pool part of the Miles Park? Cuz it it shouldn't be, is it? Oh, it is. Yeah, cuz you know, the river used to come through there, and later they just, Euro land reformation, just added that soil to block off. It doesn't matter.
Well, just a second, you, see if you're, do you have any other questions? Cuz we can just tell.
That's a question.
I know, but do you have any other ones?
Yeah, I just was wondering what the boundaries were set on whatever platform now.
Okay.
As far as what it qualifies as Miles Park.
I I just asked because I know Faith has a timer, and I don't want our talking to eat into your time, so I try to make us wait for the public.
Yeah, that was just a, just a question.
Yeah, Mr. Gager, do you mind if we pull them out? You can. So.
Uh, i- i- if I may, the to to answer, um. Exactly, thank you. And 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 so that is, um, as I mentioned, there are some um items of of kind of historical incongruence. That staff has noted within the application, and the 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 date and provenance of swimming pool is one of those.
Okay.
Um, but a- as shown on the map, uh displayed, the the district does include the swimming pool.
It does.
Okay, but one of the things that sounds like you'll be correcting is the information that Wendy just pointed out.
The data construction for the pool is not.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, other public comment? Move online. Anyone, anyone? No one, no one? So, public comment on action item A. Sacagawea Miles Park National Historic District nomination is closed. Commissioners. Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm gonna try to answer Lindy's question here real quick. Um. Swimming pool in this is called, is a contributing structure. It was built in forty nine.
Yeah.
And uh, I believe this um. Preservation standards, um if it's past fifty years, it can be included as an historic structure. Don't hold me on that, but I'm just, it is a contributing structure according to um. National Historic Register, along with the lagoon, which was done thirty seven, thirty eight. Pump House, uh, stuff like that, but it's um. The thing, yeah, I I I guess the overall thing here um is, do we want? Our part, that whole area. As a national, you know, I mean, uh registered with the um. Um, National Historic uh Preservation District, um nationally, um placed on that. And I can't see any reason why we wouldn't. It opens up areas of funding and stuff like that. And uh, so. Yeah, the more historic districts we have, the better I like it, so um, thank you. I yield, mate.
And then, Lyndy, I I read through all of this too, and there was a mention, and I'm not gonna be able to find it in all this now. About the two islands, McLeod Island and. And and that the Army Corps brought in soil and made one island out of two, so there is.
They've never been made uh in the two, I guess, I don't know, cuz when you cross the stone bridge at Yellowstone Street. It it continues around, and then it goes around each island, and then you got that triangle where the veterans um garden. So, they're really still kind of two separate islands, but they do bring in that filter.
Yeah. And so they did make mention of that.
And I don't know. Stone Bridge was put in, but they are two separate islands.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else? Other commissioners?
I'll just say, I think that um if we were to designate it, or if it were to be designated as a national historic place. Um, that's our city saying that our history is important. And I think what's different about this from other historic places in town, it's the city. In my, in my interpretation, it's the city saying that recreation has historically been important to Livingston. Um, and that's something that I think is a defining characteristic of our community. Um, and it's something that that I personally value uh very deeply in our community and and the life that I live here. And I think that that's a a we unifying sentiment among folks who live in our community. So I think that for that reason, it's important to um to to say that the history and um the the practice of recreation is important to us.
Well, I appreciate all your great comments. I will say, I appreciate that I believe sometimes this is an administrative decision. And that in some places, the legislative branch might not have the opportunity for this conversation. So I appreciate that Mr. Gager put this on our agenda and included us in the conversation along with staff. I think um, that's reflective of what our community wants to see in the executive branch, so thank you for putting on agenda, so we could all have a conversation about it. I don't have anything to add. I think you all already covered it. So we have a um motion. By Lyons and a second by Kale. The motion is as stated on page one oh one with the addition of with changes in the letter. We ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Roll call please.
Chair News, fourth vice chair Kale, fourth commission agreement.
Or. Or.
Motion passes. Next up is action item B. City manager's recommendation for commissioner board appointments. Please for Gager.
Uh, good evening, Chair News, members of the commission. So at at uh a- as you know, there are a number of advisory boards and committees of the city of Livingston. And uh and several of them, as pointed out in the staff report, um seek the the presence of a commissioner. Uh, on on various boards and committees. And and those, um just to be clear, on the city planning board, the city parks and trails committee, the city tree board. And and then separately, um the the urban renewal agency also has typically had a a member of the city commission on its. Um, on its board, although um that is not a current requirement. Um, I've I've been informed by the board chair that it is a a measure of alignment um that they enjoy. And and so if if the city commission would would like to appoint a member, um that they would welcome that. And similarly, we have the um the city county health board, which is not a necessarily an advisory board of the city. Um, it is a a functional joint board of the city and county, and and there is a a position um on on that board as well. Um, for for one of the commissioners. And then, you know, I uh, so I will, I will yield to to you folks if you have any questions. Uh, I'll stand for this.
Just wanna clarify on page two thirty nine. There's a couple of. A couple of um. Bits that need to be corrected.
Um, yeah, so I, you know, thank you for for pointing that out. So I'm the 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 city um county health board. That is actually a a voting um position. And then I um I had not uh included the the city county library board. Um, as 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 an appointment this evening, I had had a conversation earlier in December with the the library director. Um, when we kind of reviewed the composition of the board. And um and and it's my understanding, there's uh two city representatives, two county representatives, and they jointly elect the fifth representative. Um, and and that is, it's what's noted on on the web there, the library's website, and what their practice has been. Um, I I'm informed that historically, there's also been a a a commission liaison to the board as well. And and so if if you folks would uh would like to appoint a a liaison um to that, that non-voting position. Um, that that is a possibility as well.
Because I'm intimately familiar with when library board meetings are. Um, it's actually on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
Yeah. I just, childcare, you know, you gotta like work it around the board. They are, just like.
Absolutely.
I'll let him know, I'll let him know, you feel that way, thank you. Okay, so. I wanna hear from commissioners. I know.
Oh, I. Um, one more clarifying.
Yeah, please.
The Livingston or urban renewal agency, that is a non-voting position, as I know.
Okay.
I'm showing voting. Unless they've changed bylaws, which I'm currently on that and uh been remiss, attended meeting. But there hasn't been.
You have yes that they.
Pardon?
You said that they do vote or they do not vote? Non-voting ends voting in here. I have their bylaws.
Yeah, I tried, and I got shut down.
I have the bylaws here because that's how I roll, apparently. They care around bylaws to me. But that's probably not important right now. I have that they do vote, but this is also from last year, but and so I don't know. We can.
See, yeah.
We can always ask, Mr. Decker to like.
I can review that with the media as well.
Let's hear where people wanna be um and how this last year went. Uh, cuz I kinda wanna not make assumptions and see where everybody wants to be, since I know we've been spread out, and then um. Maybe we can just like go down the line or something? Does that work for you all? Think turns, do you wanna start, Vice Chair Kale?
Sure, so I am on the city county health board. Um, I would like to stay on the board. We only meet quarterly, um but I would like to to stay on that board. There's some things on that board that I find interesting. And like, you through uh with, uh particularly when it revolves around housing and some other issues. So I would, I would like to stay on that board.
Uh, Commissioner Friedman?
Yeah, I want, uh, I've had a trouble like with this uh city county library. But I think from now on, I can be more active and uh do what I'm supposed to do. So, I'm looking forward to getting back in that, that again, I yield.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz.
I've been a miserable representative for Parks and Trails, to be honest. You know, getting back to them and doing uh. Really what they need. This is one of the more active boards that we have.
And I've been working so much out of town and trying to get back again to meet meetings and stuff like that. Hopefully that's clearing up, but if somebody is truly interested and would like to replace me on that, I think that deserves consideration. It's a wonderful board, and I have not met their needs anywhere close, so. I can only promise if I stay on it, that I will move forward and be more diligent. But at this point, it won't hurt my feelings if somebody else wants to take over.
And then you were on the U R A also.
U R A, but that generally quarterly. In the past, when I was on it three, four years ago, was very active with the downtown construction and stuff like that, we met monthly and stuff like that, and then more maybe had it for two years, not back on it. It seems to me a little more quarterly, although it seems every other month, maybe they've been meeting, but I do like I have no problem being on that, maintaining that, I like it. But there again, I think Parks and Trails deserves a lot of attention, and I apologize for not being a good representative of the commission for them. That I yield. I will resume that position. Nobody else will take it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
It's my honor to serve on the city planning board. That was my introduction into public service in our community, and it's a fantastic board with a fantastic chair and a fantastic city representative, and we have a lot of work, and that work is only I mean, we, we, when I started, we were working on the growth policy, and we were meeting weekly or bi-weekly, it definitely felt like weekly. And we finished that growth policy, it was also what inspired me, that growth policy was what inspired me to run for city commission. And now it kind of just worked out that when we finished the growth policy, now we're getting a lot of requests for land use decisions, so it, I think it's an important board, and it's one that I can lend it a some degree of expertise to, and I, I would like to continue doing that. It is a very demanding board, and as such, I do not feel comfortable taking Parks and Trails.
Another demanding board as well.
So I, I would, I would gladly stay on the city planning board, and I do not have the capacity to add anything beyond what I'm currently committed to. So I love, I love the planning board and would love to stay there.
Do you feel you have any special qualifications that make you? Okay, and I was on the tree board, I think the hardest thing about the tree board is the time of day for those of us that have demanding day jobs. And my day job is very demanding the next several months too. But it seems as though we are in a holding pattern where we're finding our group, and maybe we, we wanna stay there for a little while now that the big drama in Livingston has sort of behind us from last year, if everybody's good, do you wanna just stay where we are? For now? Be it imperfect. Alright, so I have city planning board Lyons, tree board Newt's, health board Kale, library board Friedman, U R A and Parks and Trails, Commissioner Schwartz, thank you again for doing double duty again for us this year.
I said I promise I do better.
So I'm looking for someone to make a motion, and if you want me to do it, since I have it written down, I can do that too. So I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Lyons to city planning board, Commissioner Schwartz to the city parks and trails committee, Commissioner Newt's to the city tree board, Commissioner Schwartz to the city urban renewal agency, Commissioner Kale to the city county board of health, and Commissioner Friedman to the city county library board, so I added that bit. Do I have a second? Motion by Newt's, second by Kale, any discussion? Oh, we gotta open it's public comment, public comment. Anybody wanna give comment, please come on up to the podium and you can before, after, sign your name, but just state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Ballard, twelve eleven Sweetgrass Lane, Livingston. And just I'm one of the new people on the Parks and Trails Committee, I think there's three of us. I think the committee is what, either five people or six people, so we need, they're gonna need all the help we can get. I'm new to town, I've been here for fourteen months, I was on a similar committee in Greenwood Village, which is a suburb of Denver, so I have some experience with these issues. But anyway, we would at least I would love to see more participation than Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? And thank you for serving on our boards, we really appreciate public participation. Alright, public comment on board recommendations or board appointments are closed. Now we can talk about it, is there anything else to talk about?
I'll just make a, a general comment about the boards, I think as we saw from our applications for the conservation board, we have an incre- and, and folks here today, we have an incredibly committed citizenry in Livingston, and it's you know, I, I tend to espouse a lot of the assets of our community, but I think that is particularly as it comes to the administration of public policy, it's an incredible asset in our community that we have so many members that are willing to, to donate their time. And I think it's important to think about what our jobs as commissioners would be without these committed boards. That would mean that, that we need to do all of this, all of these committees, all this committee with ourselves. The committees help us to make informed decisions, and that's what we're likely to do, is to make informed decisions. And there's only so much information as a volunteer commission or relatively volunteer commission that we can bring to this ourselves. And so we, we lean on those boards to help inform our decision, and it's an integral part of, of the process and the way that, that the system that we have here was designed. And it, and it helps us to be effective and to, to make those decisions with all the resources available, so just really on record saying thank you to our committee mem- committee and board members for that, for that service, it's it's essential to quality functioning of our government, so.
Thank you, I would just add too, I think it's a good reminder that we are more or less volunteering, we don't get paid a considerable amount of money for our time as commissioners both in meetings, between meetings, and all the time we spend with our constituents, in addition to the board, so I think we do our very best, and it's also good to give each other a lot of grace, that sometimes we're gonna miss things, because most of us sitting, most of us sitting here have full-time jobs or have had full-time jobs while we've been commissioners, so that's not a small lift for us to basically be working you know, an extra job for free for our community, and it's not like we're you know, getting lots of other benefits. Just to put that out there, I think, I think we all do our best, and it's good to extend some grace to each other, since we're all gonna miss meetings now and then for things that we just can't control, so, okay, so we have a motion. In a second, are we done talking? Roll call please. Look at us, we haven't even taken a break yet. Moving on to city manager comments.
Thank you Chair Newt's, I will, in the interest of respecting everyone's time, because the last two meetings have been a little bit longer, I will keep my comments brief, and first and foremost, I would like to thank Public Direct Works Director Shannon Holmes and his crew, especially Hal and his crew in the water department, was a a little bit of a cold one last week, and, and Hal and, and his team got out to I believe no less than twenty-eight service calls on the, the Christmas holiday weekend. And, and so I can't thank Shannon and, and his team over there enough for that work. And I would also like to point out that over the weekend, our city building director Jim Woodhall celebrated his thirtieth anniversary with the city, and I'm, I'm happy to report that he actually did show up to work today as well, so. Any one of, of your number thirty-one, Jim, I appreciate your, your service there. And, and then finally, you know, as we embark on, on twenty twenty-three, I want to echo a, a little bit of, of Commissioner Lyons's comments on the, the, the power of, of community volunteerism and the, the spirit of community that, that I've observed in Livingston over the past two months, I'm, I'm very thankful for it and would use this opportunity to let the community know that twenty twenty-three promises to be a very busy and exciting year for the city of Livingston, we will, within the, the next month or so, embark on implementing the growth policy. And so the, the, the community can expect a, a number of conversations related to not only the growth policy, but the, the associated housing action plan and Trails and African Transportation Plan as well. There will be a, a, a number of public opportunities for, for the community to, to weigh in and, and help us implement all of these great foundational documents, and, and so I, I look forward to a fun and productive twenty twenty-three with you and, and the community as well.
Thank you. That was a really positive update, like, like clap for the guys that go out in freezing weather and fix water, this is not the first time as a commission we've heard or seen images of public works staff in ridiculous conditions, keeping the water flowing in Livingston, that's awesome. It's really good. I think the other time is when they brought in a pipe that burst, it was like thirty-four or something too. Next up, Commissioner Lyons.
As City Manager Gager echoed my comments, I'll echo his. I'm, I am very hopeful for twenty twenty-three. I am excited to be starting my, my second year on the commission. And I, I think that we find ourselves despite you know, despite the, the tragedies that we faced in twenty twenty-two, we find ourselves in a good place, and we can thank city staff for that. We can thank the direction of our commission for that, and we can thank our community for, for coming together. And I'm looking forward to a more policy-filled year instead of a response to disaster-filled year. I think that the commission was elected with all kinds of great policy ideas, and we haven't really had the opportunity to, to implement those yet because of the circumstances that we face, so I'm really excited for twenty twenty-three. Excited to work with Mr. Gager and the rest of staff, and I am very hopeful for the year, I'm looking forward to it.
Keep short, sweet, I'm looking forward to a good new year. And it's gonna be great work in Grant. I look forward to it, and Happy New Year, everybody, and I yield.
Commissioner Freeman?
Well, I'm approaching my twelfth year as a commission, and it's been quite a thread. I also wanna thank the community for voting my daughter Lori Bishop back into state level. On Monday, her husband stores his mom Ronnie Stan and myself and my wife Brelli traveled to Helena to see her sworn in. And I think she's got tremendously bright future. Does a great job for our community, so all good stuff, and I'm looking forward to a good, you know, we, we get a new group here, and I think we're going I think we learned a lot the last year, and looking forward to go forward, and I think it's gonna be very exciting. A lot of good stuff on the agenda, so I wanna thank everybody for their support.
Wow, how I follow that? I'm very excited about twenty twenty-three, we made it through twenty twenty-two as a community, and I think we should all be really proud of ourselves. It's very hard here. And I look forward to twenty twenty-three with our new city manager and city staff and the script people I'm sitting at these two tables with. I'm glad to be back here together like this, this is, this is incredible, I think. Commissioner Lyon and I, this is the first time we've sat in this room like this. Yeah, since the debate, and when we debated during with Clinton, we were here. So, yeah, it's, it's exciting to, you know, we're starting our second year, but it's a little new too. So I'm excited to be back here, thank you for getting us back in the, in this building and in this place where we can have public meetings and, and see folks, and also still have the, the hybrid option, or you know, the, the, the virtual option for those that can't be here. So that's exciting to have the option for all of our community members. Looking forward to a new year.
The best part about going last is I can just say ditto all of, and Mr. Gager, what, what you all said, it's good to be back in person, a friendly reminder to Commissioner Lyons and Kale as we help clean up afterwards, so you know. So you know, Commissioner's help with cleaning up in here, you can add that to your list of commissioner duties. I don't have anything else to say, so, um, motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm gonna give it to Friedman, second to Schwartz, sorry. All in favor, say aye. Okay, motion passed, five zero, we just beat the break timer. Good job, everybody. This city commission meeting is adjourned at seven o'clock on Tuesday.